Good morning, everyone, and thank you for coming to this day's licensing hearing. We're looking at an application for a new premises licence for the Boston Arms. This procedure has been drawn up in accordance with the Licensing Act 2003 to assist those parties attending Licensing Committee hearings. The hearing before the council today is quayside judicial. I'm Dawn Dale, I'm the Chair of the Licensing Committee, and I'd like to introduce my colleagues. Good morning, councillor Ruth Milson. Thank you, and if you'd like to introduce yourselves.
Good morning, committee, my name is Christopher Greenert, I'm a solicitor, and I'm representing the applicant company this morning. And with me is Mr McDonald, who is a Director of the applicant company.
Jonathan Round, Environmental Health Officer for the Environmental Protection Service, responsible for public nuisance representation. Jonathan Round from the council, Environmental Protection Service.
Hi, I'm Alison Riocru, I'm a governor at the school next door and a local resident, and I objected.
Sorry, could you just say your name again?
Yes, Alison Riocru. Do you want to spell it?
Morning, I'm Mary Claire Frankie, I'm the solicitor to the subcommittee.
Good morning, and I'm Jane Gough from Licensing Service, and I'll be presenting the report to you today.
Thank you, everyone. I'm now going to ask Mary Claire if she can outline the procedure for today's hearing.
Sorry, somebody else has knocked theirs off. No, it's all right. Sorry, I'm very croaky this morning. So the procedure this morning is that the licensing officer will introduce the report. This morning, that's Jane. Questions concerning the report can be asked by members and the applicant. So if there's something in there that's wrong, please let us know. The licensing officer will then in turn introduce representatives for the responsible authority and interested parties, who will be asked to detail their relevant representations. This morning, we've got EPS and interested party from the school. Members can ask questions of those parties, and with the leave of the Chair, the applicant or representative may cross-examine the representatives of those parties. It'll then be over to the applicant, licensee or nominated representative, to detail the application, to provide clarification on the application, and respond to the representations that have been made. The applicant may be asked questions by members, and with the leave of the Chair from other parties present. The applicant will then be given the opportunity to sum up the application. The licensing officer will detail the options, and there'll then be a private session for members to take legal advice. At that point, yourselves and the licensing officer will go back and wait in the ante room, while members take their legal advice. You'll then be brought back into the room, and a decision of the subcommittee will be given to you this morning, in accordance with the Licensing Act and all the regulations made there under. There's a couple of additional points to note, Chair, is that any time during the process, you can request legal advice, now that can be an open session or in private. And the hearing today is in public, but that doesn't mean that we've got people walking in or out, it means that we are live on a webcast. Okay, thanks, Chair.
Thank you, I'll now ask Jane to introduce the report.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the Licensing Committee to determine the grant application for the Boston Arms on Chesterfield Road. The applicants this morning are Renwick or Renick, McDonald Bars Limited. The application was received by the Licensing Service on the 8th of November 2021, and is detailed at Appendix A of the report. During the consultation period, the applicant has already agreed to condition the licence so that alcohol won't be served during term time, which is Monday to Friday until after 4pm. Any agreements were formally circulated to all parties that had objected. The objections remained in place, as you can find from the report. So the unresolved representations were received from three different local residents, the head teacher of Woodseats Primary School, which is adjacent to the premises, and the Environmental Protection Service. Everybody's been invited, so everyone's here. The details of that are at Appendix C. And if you're happy, Chair, I'll skip through all the legal blurb, and I will skip down to the Appeal section, which is Section 8 in the report, which states that the Licensing Act 2003, Section 181, Schedule 5, makes provision for appeals to be made by the applicant and those making representations against the decisions of the licensing authority to the magistrate's court. So the recommendations to the committee chair today are that that members carefully consider the representations made, and take such steps as the subcommittee consider appropriate to promote the licensing objectives. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, does anyone have any questions about the report? Any questions?
No questions on them, except... It was just on the clarity of the map. Is that okay? How close is this general that they're talking about to the school playground? It's not clear on that map. Can you speak into the microphone, please?
Sorry, forgot. The general has got a wall down the side of it, and the playground is the other side of the wall. Six foot maybe? I don't know, to be honest. You can't see over it. You can't see over it. But it's just a wall. It's not going to be that high, but it's not that low either. Okay? Right.
Do the applicants have any questions for the report? Thank you. Now I'd like to go across to the... Is it representatives from Environmental Protection Services?
Thank you, Chair. I think Chris had kindly presented some papers, and I think the basis of mine, I think there was a lot of talk about... Well, first of all, the premises itself is slightly unusual. I mean, there's been quite a lot of, over the last few years, of what? Micro pub type things setting up. Most of the micro pubs that certainly I've dealt with sort of pride themselves on having no amplified sound in them, they base themselves on being places where you can go to talk to people and have conversations. This premises is unusual as well, in the fact that they're wanting to licence the first floor, which in terms of where it is means that it's got a party wall with residential at first floor in something that was built 70, 80, 90 years ago, and wasn't designed to have commercial activity adjacent to residential. So that's why the noise report was, you know, important to be... The noise report was commissioned, I think probably to deal with the planning application, rather than the licensing, but it serves lots of purposes. The difference being the legal argument, which is played out in several emails about the fact that I can't seek to regulate regulated entertainment before 11 o'clock. However, in terms of noise, it's just noise, and that's what the noise report should be there to address. The noise report is carried out by good consultants that have dealt with lots of places in the past. The recommendations are fine, but one of those recommendations is that there should be no amplified sound, no, sorry, no music or background music, is the way words it... My initial comments were that, basically, that the recommendations of the report should be put in place before the licence is granted. We then had a bit of to and fro in to allow the upstairs to be done six months later, because they wouldn't be trading upstairs to start with, which I was happy to agree to. It then became apparent from the emails that, because music is unregulated, that they may seek to have music on in there, so that's why I tried to put the condition on there to say no amplified sound. That was purely about the noise that was being produced, rather than seeking to regulate it, because the report specifically says that, you know, it's not suitable. The specification for the party wall at first floor is dealing with just voices. And in terms of the breakout downstairs, it's not talking about enhancing the glazing down there. Indeed, I think in the applicant's emails, it says that they've been given advice that it should be suitable for music if they put double glazing in downstairs. Again, none of that's in the report, because the report's specifically talking about noise from voices, not from amplified sound. So that's... The shortfalls of the report, basically, is that it doesn't deal with amplified sound. It doesn't deal with, you know... It doesn't deal with music, but it also doesn't deal with speakers on televisions. It wouldn't deal with the commentary at a football match. It wouldn't deal with pub quizzes on a weekly basis, it wouldn't deal with bingo. So it's controlling that and making sure that the building is... That the fabric of the building is adequate to prevent noise going across a party wall, to prevent it spilling out onto the pavement. So I think my email, which is in the bundle, what Chris said, from the 17th of December, I think sort of explains where I'm at. And the condition I've proposed there, which was my initial condition, that prior to the licence coming into effect, a noise report should be completed with... I think the important bit on that is that the approved method statement for the noise survey. Obviously, this report was produced and just submitted without prior discussions with me and the consultant. Obviously, I'd asked them to consider amplified sound in that, which might lead to either enhanced specification of the upstairs party wall, it might lead to recommendations for double glazing. In terms of noise breakout, it's quite easy. What you would... The double glazing that you put in a domestic property to stop traffic noise would be a different specification, probably, for stopping amplified sound breaking out going the other way. Again, it might put measures in there, recommending an acoustic double-door lobby to the entrance of a property to stop music breaking out through the door. So it's making sure that we get things right at the start. So rather than seeking to restrict the amplified sound, making sure that the building can cope with retaining the amplified sound within it.
Thank you. Thank you. Would you like to add anything about your objection at this point?
I would like to say something about them, is now the right time? Yeah, okay. So I spoke to the head teacher a while ago, and our first impression was that having a drinking establishment next door to the school wasn't ideal, wasn't appropriate, and that we were concerned that parents would... It would be too easy for parents to drop off kids going to the pub, or pick the kids up from school and go into the pub, being right next door. I don't know whether that's a valid concern from your point of view. I don't know how the process works, so I'm just saying what our concerns are. And that was always our main concern. Now, were the application to go ahead, there were obviously subsequent things that were to do with rubbish, smells, all that kind of thing. So this was partly to do with whether people would be stood outside, blocking the pavement, because the pavement's not very wide, people need to get past with multiple children, pushchairs, dogs, all sorts of wheelchairs, who knows what. We do have students' wheelchairs. And there's not a very wide pavement, also the alleyway is not very wide, and they converge together at a point where, every time I've been passed recently, there's been a load of bins stood around there. So it's a pretty congested area to start with. I'd be concerned about people stood outside, door propped open in the summer, all sorts of things like that. Where would the bins be put while they're being waited to be emptied? And then, of course, down the alleyway, we were concerned about broken glass, people going out the pub and immediately being sick in the alleyway, having a wee in the alleyway, all that kind of thing. So we were concerned that although the suggestion was that it would be... There would be some clearing up done during the hours of opening, this wouldn't necessarily solve the problem of the people who'd come out of the pub afterwards, and then, you know, would it all be cleared up in time for half past eight in the morning? Don't know. That would obviously be what we would want, was that when the children came up the alleyway in the morning, it wasn't horrible. So there's two things. There's a... Would it create smells and horrible stuff during the day, being next door to where all the children are playing? And then would it be safe for people to walk up and down first thing in the morning, when they're going to school? We were concerned about smoking. A lot of people who go to the pub do smoke, and smell tends to drift. There isn't a particular smoking area designated, but that doesn't mean people won't want to smoke. And my guess is that they would either stand on the pavement, in the alleyway, outside the school, or maybe in the backyard, all of which are right next door to the school. So inevitably, the children will get the benefit of that. You know, if it does come over. Now, with the change in hours, that shouldn't be such a problem, because obviously it's going to be a cafe, in effect, I think, until four o'clock. So that's less of an issue. But, you know, it's still a potential problem. I was worried about the privacy of the playground. There are three upstairs windows which look out over the playground, one of which is from the upstairs seating area. And I don't feel it's appropriate that that should be looking over the playground. If it was my back garden, I wouldn't want the next door neighbours putting in a window to look over. And I don't think, you know, looking over all the schoolchildren is an appropriate thing to do either. I wasn't clear from the planning or this application whether this included the backyard of the premises. All the red lines didn't include the backyard, but then all the back lines not including the backyard means I'm not sure where they're going to put all the bins. So therefore, if the backyard is included, then do we know what it's going to be used for? Is the back door through downstairs loo going to be used for taking out the rubbish? If so, then that needs to automatically close to stop the noise. Is the, you know, is that back area going to get used at some point in the future? Or is it going to be, you know, not part of what's allowed to be used? And that's really my queries. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If you'd like to now present your application. Oh, sorry. Have you got any questions for the applicant? For the applicant?
Thank you.
Have I got any questions?
As members now, just before the applicant representative make their representations, have you guys got any questions on the representations that you've heard from either EPS or from the school? So as members, have you got any questions before you move on to the next?
Well, I think you did a very good job of asking those questions, putting yourselves forward. Have you got any questions, Ruth? Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, question for Alison. Just about, you've mentioned just there about the windows upstairs, and the concern about overlooking the playground. What other properties are there that overlook the playground? And do they have windows? And has there been some... Does the school work with residents and businesses to ensure that there isn't overlooking? Sorry, Mike.
I don't think there are any other properties that overlook the school. There's... It's on a road, and there is a fence with, like a fence with a hedge growing. But I feel that it's... If the staff are in the playground with the kids, and somebody stops and starts peering in from the road, they're going to have something to say to them, you know, and they do... You know, that's something they keep an eye out for, which is why they've got the hedge and all this kind of thing, because they don't want people overlooking the children. It's, you know, a safety thing, really. And if it was an upstairs toilet, it would obviously have, you know, whatever it is, frosted glass. But if it's an upstairs window where you're going to be sat next to the window, looking out the window while you're having your beer or your coffee or whatever, I don't know, then that's my worry. It's somewhere where somebody could go and sit and watch the playground.
Yeah, no, I totally understand where you're coming from with that. I'm just interested to see if there are any other windows that have been spotted by the school, and what, you know, what kind of contact you would normally have. If you say, oh, there's a window that overlooks the playground, would you, you know, go around and say, can you put obscuring film on your window, please? It's just a case of not treating one premises any differently from any others, really, I think. So what mitigation would be, would put your mind at rest about that one particular issue?
Well, I'd prefer it to have frosted glass.
Or a film on the glass?
Frosted glass on the windows overlooking the school.
Yeah, or a film on the glass, which is cheaper than frosted glass, yeah.
Councillor, I appreciate I'll have an opportunity to address, but as we're discussing this issue, particularly my client is intending to put some frosting on a film over the glass. That was going to be part of my presentation, just in case your fellow councillors wanted to pursue that same. I'd hope to address that before we spend too much time on that point.
Roger, do you have any questions?
Has there been any particular problems down Woodseats with any of the public house premises?
I... I'm not an expert. I don't know as much as the head teacher, who unfortunately couldn't come today because they hadn't got enough staff due to Covid. So they're short of staff, otherwise she'd have been here. I know they've had experiences in the past where parents have turned up at school drunk. But obviously, that's not to do with the particular premises. Is that what you meant?
Okay, right. Can I address the applicant?
No, not yet.
Ask a question of the...
Not yet.
Oh, sorry.
So does anyone else have any more questions?
Thank you. It was just the confirmation for Mr Round before I made my presentation. The chronologies I set out in the written representations which we circulated, that is correct, that chronology up to that point, or did you have any comments about the chronology?
No, I think it's fine.
I just wanted to confirm that, because I will be covering that in my presentation. I didn't want to, as it were, put words into Mr Round's mouth, thank you.
Okay, if you'd now like to put your presentation forward?
Thank you very much. We're grateful for everybody's attendance this morning. It is important to consult and to take on views in this application, like any application. I would contend that this is a modest application. Miss Gough did point out that conditions had been agreed and put forward. That's not strictly correct. In light of the representations that have been received, my client has offered compromises. Those have not resolved the representations. Although they haven't resolved the representations, it's not my client's intention to withdraw and take those off the table. We are leaving them on the table as we think are reasonable matters to address concerns raised. In the papers that I have circulated before the hearing, therefore, was a revised operating plan. It would be wrong to say that this operating plan is agreed by the objectors, but it is movement that my client has made in light of those comments, and this is the application that we are seeking today. I think that's entirely correct, and I'm sure your legal adviser will correct me if I'm wrong, on the basis that we are further conditioning and reducing the hours within the range that was originally advertised, that we can draw in and reduce, in effect, the scope of the application. And that is what we've done with this revised operating plan. So when you do repit it, it's not the operating plan in the application that we are seeking, but the operating plan, which was a separate document that we circulated. So we have outlined some pre-research that we did at the local pubs in the area, licensed premises, people operating, and that, again, is in my written representation. And you will see that the application has always been within the envelope of trading within, in that area. I think it's proper. It's not been suggested otherwise, I have to say, but I think I'd like to highlight that my client isn't trying and has not tried to push the envelope in Woodseats out beyond what is currently there. The nearest licensed premises to the school, by my repping, is about 30, just over 30 metres from the premises, a couple of doors up, which is the Woodseats Palace. If you're familiar with Chesterfield Road and the highway, you'll know that. It's a large Wetherspoons premises, which opens at, has licence from 9am and through to the early hours through the week. What my client is seeking is a licence which will operate from 10am in the morning till 11pm in the evening, Sunday to Thursday, and from 10 till 11.30 Fridays and Saturdays, with a 30-minute drinking uptime thereafter. We've described it as a sort of seasonal or non-standard variation in that on days that the school has children present, so during term times, we're not necessarily including teacher training days, but it's... The concern is about protection, children from harm has been expressed. My client is not as convinced as possibly those opposing that that is there, but nevertheless, we propose that the alcohol will not be starting until four o'clock. But just to obviously put that in the context of the area, within 30 metres of the premises, the premises opening at 9am, which is there. In the representations that you'll see, there is an extract where when the representation says, there are other licensed premises within 100 metres, and smoking, detritus and vomit regularly litter the pavements around it directly outside that. My proposal, my theory or ethos is that new premises, which might challenge and raise standards in the area from experienced operators such as my client, shouldn't be denied on the basis of issues that may be existing in the area from other premises. Those other premises should be dealt with, and there's a whole mechanism for the council to deal with those. And I'm sure that licensing officers and infant Mr Round and his team will be addressing such issues if they feel there is legitimate evidence of them, a matter of concern. But those issues that might be there at the moment cannot be placed at my client's door. It's never operated in the vicinity or at these premises. The application has received a number of representations, and Alison has very eloquently outlined those again for you this morning. The issue of bins in around the premises, the backyard is not intended to be used as a drinking area or an external drinking area. It is our... That is why it's not within our red line. There are planning and licence, of course. I'm here, and you are here to be considered licensed today. It's not intended to be an external drinking area. My client isn't intending to make an application for a pavement licence for the High Street and Chesterfield Road. If either of those uses were to be brought in, they would be matter for subject and separate application, especially placing tables and chairs on the highway. Although there has been a lot of deregulation around that, and it's been streamlined, that is not carte blanche power to grant permissions, which would be impeding people's travelling down. Chesterfield Road and the High Street here is a very busy premises, with literally hundreds of operating businesses up and down that road, a lot of foot traffic going on at all times. Alison explained that if the school felt that there was somebody overlooking the children and taking a suspicious interest in people, in the grounds, they would be challenged, and that would be how they would deal with that. I think that is entirely correct, and is the way that any premises would do with such behaviour. I think a simple solution would be to frost the upstairs windows, and we are happy to agree that. We don't want to be a cause of concern to the school. We certainly wouldn't want that sort of behaviour. And if that can be a simple solution to tend that, we are more than happy to agree that as a matter. Of course, the school is on the main High Street. There is foot traffic up and down that street at all times of the day, especially during the day. It's got a low fence and then metal railings. If you or I walked along the street and we turned our heads, we could look clearly into that playground. That is not a defence, that is not a suspicious behaviour. But the school is, as a public building and a school, correctly, it's not behind high cement walls that we can't see into, it's an open space, and that's the nature of it. So that risk or that concern is certainly not unique to my client's premises. Across the road, directly looking into the playground, are other businesses with flats, et cetera, above. I hope it is not unique to my client's premises. I hope, it is not unique to my client's premises in any way. And I think we are, we should class that as a fear and concern. And I think my client's proposal about that is entirely appropriate and of enough magnitude to deal with it. In terms of refuge, et cetera, then that will be dealt with in conjunction with our refuge collectors. Wherever the bins need to be placed at the collection time would be it. We are not afraid as to what those rules are or arrangements are. With businesses up and down that street, their bins must be collected and we will fall part of that. We are not proposing to store commercial bins on public highways, that would be an offence. So again, can I just assure Alison and the governors that we appreciate that the bins for the business will need to be stored appropriately. Again, perhaps not a matter directly linked to actual activity, but for you to look at today. In addition to those points, there is a number of others which I can go through kind of line by line, but I don't wish to sort of labour at the points. Certainly, there'll be working toilets within the premises. I've been a licensed lawyer for a long time, Marie Claire will testify. The phantom urinator involved is somebody that comes over in many representations. It obviously is an issue that people find offensive and exists. But licensed premises, ours included, have toilets, we would need those to be working, to be operating. Our front doorstep, our entrance, our curtilage is an invitation for people to come in and visit our premises. To have that covered in litter or excrement or any such effluent would be offensive to my client as much as it would be to any other member of the public. We've put in a condition about cleansing, regularly cleansing that area. I think that's entirely reasonable. If we attended in the morning and although when we left in the evening it was clean, it wasn't in the morning, the first thing we would do would be to cleanse that area in preparation for the day's trade. There is no, it's erroneous however to say that these premises will increase or lead to that activity. Why somebody would step outside the premises and then need to relieve themselves when they can easily use the toilets in the premises is sort of inexplicable. I don't want to go into the many reasons why it could happen, but people travelling far over distances, having left their premises, relieve themselves on the way home and things of that nature. It's not a behaviour that we support, but certainly not that you could link to the premises itself. We have made the comments that we have no plans to make applications for external drinking at the premises at this time. We have, that is not to say we don't have them in the far future, but I have no instructions from my client at all that that is in anywhere in their plan for the premises. However, if there was, that would be a separate and distinct application, especially for the placing of tables and chairs externally. My client has properly engaged, and I think engaged within the spirit of the act, when these comments have come in. He has not sat behind his defences and said, no, no, you prove it, can't get me, it's not me. He has moved forward and tried to address those concerns. One which I find unusual from my side is to curtail alcohol to four o'clock in the afternoon so that it isn't available during school periods at all. I think that's a significant seismic shift in the application and is a sign of my client's commitment to try and be a good neighbour, not to cause anxiety and to move forward. In respect of the Environmental Protection Service, Mr. Round's service and his representation, we made a lot of progress over a period of time on that representation. Matters were agreed, flexibility was agreed, hours were curtailed, lots of work was done. And we have left that on the table, although Mr. Round has retreated back to an initial position or moved back to an initial position from that. The fact is that Mr. Round was content with ninety-nine percent of what was proposed and conditions agreed. The issue came simply where Mr. Round asked that no amplified sound from fixed equipment shall be present in the building throughout the operation of the site without the written consent of Sheffield Environmental Protection Service. We were grateful that that condition meant that my client could, if the agreement of EPS was given in writing, install that equipment. What we were doing was future-proofing the application to allow us to install that. It is correct to say that the acoustic report that has been prepared initially does not propose amplified sound within the premises. Because that would equate to double glazing and a cost involved in that would be more than the business can bear at this time. So my client is not intending to put amplified music in at premises at this time. My client is hoping to trade, to collect some money and revenues, put in some double glazing in the future, which will trigger an application to planning, which we anticipate will need to have a condition lifted to allow us to do that music based on a revised report at that time. And away we go. Now, I think that that is what Mr. Round anticipated also and accepted. And we are grateful for the flexibility of his service to allow us to essentially deal with the planning condition, satisfy people as to noise from the premises and then install without having to come back to the service to vary our licence again. Because the activity that my client is talking about is unregulated activity. We are not proposing DJs and loud music. We're proposing background music that you would find in cafes and pubs and micro bars across the city that you'd find in Marks and Spencer's, that you hear in Meadow Hall as you're walking around if you stop and listen. Background music, it's not regulated. Louder music under deregulation is also unregulated up to eleven o'clock. But that is not part of my client's plan for this premises at all. It's a small venue. Music of that level would be oppressive and be counterproductive. That is not what we're proposing. Now, my client could have easily agreed the condition proposed by Mr. Round on the 10th of December in his email. That would appear to have led to the EPS withdrawing and we would have been left with the other objectors to deal with. I felt that that would be disingenuous to do so because a condition seeking to regulate activity which is not, which is unregulated would be inviting the committee to make or act ultra virus, to act unlawfully, to seek to regulate something that you cannot regulate, to ask the committee to usurp Parliament, which sounds like an extraordinarily serious charge, but essentially it's now a permissive system up to eleven PM and to ask you to go against that position. So what Mr. Round has said to you this morning, we are in agreement with, except to say at no stage did we say we are going to start doing recorded or music before any sort of double glazing is put in. There are separate issues, they're planning issues and not a matter for today. The condition that the service is asking the committee to put in is extraordinary. It's extremely detailed, very expensive to undertake had it not been that we'd already done a report to a similar standard for the planning. But suggesting that for all new licences, that should go on as a standard condition that my firm has seen applied as acceptable on multiple different styles of operation.
Sorry, I'm just mindful of time, but can you...
I will do, I'm coming to an end, I'm getting slightly more red in the face, so you can tell I'm coming to a crescendo. But asking you to agree what is a standard condition, an out-of-the-box condition, which does not pair any sort of reference to the style of operation, the magnitude of the business that is in. What we have proposed as an alternative in our operating plan is no amplified music should be played through the operation at the site after twenty-three hundred hours without the consent of EPS. We've placed the twenty-three hundred hours in because that is the time that that type of activity would become regulated. I would point out however, that at no stage in the application have we asked for regulated entertainment. So if you go into a bar and there is background music, that is not a regulated activity. Under the planning permission, if there are restrictions affecting my client that he has to abide to, that is a separate piece of legislation, separate permission. And Mr. Round is effect trying to ask you to duplicate two different concerns. We would suggest that that is inappropriate. The conditions that we have proposed, all of which we were agreed with Mr. Round right up until, are pointing out that that condition should only apply after eleven PM is where we got to. I think it's, I think the baby has gone out with the bathwater by reverting back to the original. All of that good progress that we made seems to have been lost. We came down to a very narrow issue. I'd ask you therefore to grant the licence, subject to the operating plan as proposed, the amended operating as a plan. And if the committee feel it necessary, my client would have no objection at all if you required the first floor window in the seating area to be opaque or frosted, whichever wording you feel appropriate. My client would have no objection to that whatsoever. We are not asking for permission today to cause a nuisance or crime disorder or to endanger children. We're asking for a licence to carry on licensed activity in a proper way, in a modest and precise way. And of course, there are many checks and balances in place should my client's word not be followed through. Thank you very much for your attention this morning.
Thank you. Members, do you have any questions?
Yep, I'll let me go first. Yes, thank you. Yeah, I just, I'd be keen to hear from Mr. McDonald himself, if you're happy to speak, but I understand that you've brought your solicitor. I'm interested to hear more description of what, how you envisage the premises, what, you know, what vision you have for how it will take its place in, you know, in a busy community and the kind of product you're offering. If you can describe the product you're intending to offer, what kind of clientele you expect to attract to the premises, what kind of clientele you will welcome at the premises and conversely, you know, who you might not welcome at the premises and how you would expect to deal with excessive drinking and intoxication. And whether you'd intend to run happy hours and any of that kind of thing.
Hi, everybody. Yeah, so our background is actually craft beer. So that's what we've done previously, we've run operations doing sort of artisan craft. We do a lot in the local area. In terms of this operation, we've always wanted to do something that's coffee and cake in the daytime, creating an inclusive coffee shop sort of environment and then moving into the evening hours, doing alcohol trade. We'd be doing something very different, I think, to what's already on Woodseats High Street. I think at the minute, there's a lot of places doing macro products, which is, you know, your large-scale breweries and selling them for as low a price as possible, so it's a bit of a race to the bottom. We're not looking to do that at all, we're kind of looking to do something completely different, which is, you know, while we hope to be a success is because we're offering a completely different product, a completely different atmosphere to Woodseats High Street by doing something that is a more premium offering. So we're looking at, as our craft beer is our core sort of range, but we're looking at doing nice wines, cocktails as well and just creating an inclusive environment. In terms of the sort of licensing objectives, we're experienced operators, so we've been doing this for about five years now, running different style places. We've got a craft bar in Callum Island, we've got a pub that we run down in Derbyshire. So yes, so we've had many experiences of, you know, regulating, making sure that people aren't drinking to excess and everything like that. And we've so far had a successful record of doing it, we've never encountered any issues to speak of yet.
Thanks very much. Thank you. Roger, do you have any questions?
According to this plan, you've got ten tables. What is the capacity that we're looking at in terms of, you know, clientele?
For the downstairs, we're looking at forty-five people. And when you include the upstairs as well, I'd say you're looking at about seventy people, which would include staff members as well.
Would that be used for private functions upstairs?
We could do that, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Because you could seal that room off and it could be booked out.
And how would that be monitored in terms of noise?
Well, I mean, we can have a member of staff present, but we've, you know, we're going to be installing all the required amount of insulation and soundproofing on that wall and on the upstairs wall as well that's adjacent to the residence. So there would be no excess noise, that we don't think, anyway.
And this is a specialist micro bar that's selling just craft beers, is it?
No, we'd be doing cocktails, we'd be doing wine and we'd be doing a mixture of craft and, and sort of other beers as well, like sort of imports, Belgian beers, German beers, that sort of thing.
Does anybody else have any more questions? No? Yep?
I think in your representation, you, sorry, in your representation, you made reference to the fact that if you were to change the glazing, it would bring about a planning application. Why would that be the case?
We foresee there could be a condition on the planning that no audio equipment might be installed at the premises currently. We could see that become a planning condition. So we would do the double glazing, which would need permission for the condition restricting speakers, which we could appear on the planning condition to have that lifted. So again, your service, what we'd anticipate, Job, is that once we, we would go forward with a plan to say that, which we are confident would be the position, having spoken to our experts, is that glazing would allow us to have a level of noise within the premises from audio equipment, background, et cetera. That we put that to the planners to lift any sort of restriction on that. We know that your service would be consulted on that at that stage. And what we would expect is if that condition was successfully lifted, because everybody was satisfied, we could then, and I'm having worked with you over many years, Job, and I would anticipate that your service would then say, in terms of the licensing condition, you can go ahead and install at the same time. What the point of that, we were simply making is that we don't think we can properly ask the committee to regulate an activity that is not regulatable before eleven o'clock, only because of the legal shackles posted on this committee. We understand in planning that that might come about.
But obviously planning's different to licensing and the planning isn't in place yet, is it?
No, no, we anticipate that that will be where it will end up. We can see that progressing and in planning that would be entirely correct. But the point that we're making, without banging on about it, is it's simply for the licence, that's not the appropriate response. Planning, you will proceed as you wish and you will obtain what you need in planning and I'm sure that. But for the licence today, we're just saying to the committee, for the benefit of his, that restrictions should only be applicable after eleven o'clock because that's when the activity is regulated. But we're not saying to the committee that we're intending to breach any planning permission that we would hopefully secure. That's not, they're two separate things.
So sorry to labour the point, but the planning isn't in place, so there is no condition restricting music at all on premises at the moment. So the noise report, what you've got, doesn't address how music or noise, amplified sound will be able, you know, kept within the building.
Absolutely, the application before the committee does not include any regulated entertainment. So we're not, we haven't put a report before the committee for an activity that we're not doing. So that's our point, it's not a regulated activity. So it would be bizarre for the committee to start asking premises to disprove negatives of things of that nature. It's not unusual, we are not asking the committee for regulated entertainment before eleven o'clock. And my client's representations are very clear to the committee. And the fact that they don't intend to provide that at this stage because they envisage there'll be restrictions on the planning in any event.
Okay, thank you. Do you like to come back?
I've just had a couple of questions, please. One is that the, I don't think the hours on the planning application are the same as the hours on this application. And I don't know whether you're going with the hours on the planning application. Is that... Is that something you've looked at?
The application, yeah, so the application is, for the licence is what's before you today. That is what we're seeking from you today, to be clear.
Planning one will get changed then, okay. The query about the bins was as much to do with the fact there'll be more bins than there were before due to the fact that a premises that's doing food and other alcohol and drinks and all sorts of things will presumably have more waste than an insurance office. And therefore, at the point they all get parked outside, I would be keen that there would be some agreement that they wouldn't block the alleyway or the pavement.
I, we can't, we can't, that wouldn't be legitimate a way of dealing with it. So the bins will be dealt with properly. I'm sure that my client would provide his contact details for you as the governor, for the governors of the school as well because if this licence is granted, if the project does proceed, we are going to be neighbours and absolutely intend to keep those discussions open.
Okay, and the last point was that I can see in the revised operating plan that you mentioned Refusal's Book and CCTV. And I wondered whether it would be perhaps an option to put a floodlight down the alleyway and then use the CCTV to record the alleyway, in which point then presumably if your customers were causing a problem in the alleyway, then you would be able to deal with it more effectively.
My client in principle would be happy to do so. There are obviously, there are slight concerns about videoing areas that aren't partial, I suppose, as for data protection services, which I'm sure is the governors you would come across, but in principle, we'd have no issues. Just to be clear, that's always been a condition in the application. I don't know if yours is colour, so that's always been in there from the outset.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think what I'm getting from this is this is about being good neighbours at the end of the day. And I think, I think one of my concerns was about the noise. And you mentioned the fact that, you know, it's non-regulated noise at Meadow Hall, Marks and Spencer's, but they don't have neighbours that are attached to them. So I think while we can't take that into account, I just think being mindful of that, and you've answered that question by informing us that you are going to be putting sound insulation in at a later date. So thank you for that because that was one of my, I feel like we're going round and round in circles, that's all. So has anybody got anything else they'd like to ask or any other comments before we close this part of the meeting? Mary Claire? So yeah, if you'd just like to sum up, thank you.
Without sounding too much of a suck-up, Chair, I think you summed it up very well there yourself, so I won't take any more time. As I say, we're not asking for permissions to cause a small nuisance or a little bit. If you grant this licence, it's on the basis that those objectives will be promoted now and going forward. Thank you for your attention.
Okay, so at this part, we will ask you to leave and we'll be taking a closed session just to have some legal advice while we make a decision.
I just need to provide the options, Chair. Sorry, you might want to do that as well, thank you.
Okay, so just before we leave, the options open to the committee today are to grant the premises licence under the terms requested, to grant the premises licence with conditions or to reject the whole or part of the application.
Thank you, yeah, if you'd like to. We'd like to grant you the licence based on the revised operating schedule and good luck in your new venture. Thank you. I would just like, so I hope you can form a good relationship with the school. I think you will definitely, it looks like, yeah, it looks like the will is there. So hopefully you'll have a pleasant relationship with all your new neighbours. Thank you.